...Shel, Tekiah Arnold, Trent Byatt Elliott, Anthony Douglas, Hazel Harbin, Elizabeth Rose Brock Hayes, Danny Sullivan, and Reggie Williams. Together there are students of Ms. Ida Bergson, Mr. Brian Stern, Mr. Jerome White, Mr. John Adams, and Ms. Sherry Free. Let's give them a round of applause. Moving along to our high school artists. Following students one, ranging from honorable mention to gold keys at this year's Cuyahoga County's Classic Art Competition. Please come up when I say your name. Aishel Brooks, Sylvie Crowell, Amina Abdul-Hafiz, Alia Esmail, Ola Esmail, and Matthew Kowalski. Finally Jade Roberts, who received a second place award at the 11th District Congressional Art Contest. Jade Roberts. There are students of Ms. Laura Skian, Ms. Nancy Eisenberg, Ms. Claire Rant, and Ms. Hillary Nemec. Our teachers, please come forward and join your students if you're here. All right, we'll take a photo. Now between summer vacation, sports, and other commitments, there were many other winners who are unable to be with us tonight. But we'll be sure to include all their names in the upcoming story on our website. We're so proud to have such talented artists in our district. And it's especially wonderful when people from around the region and the state get to see the work that they display. Let's give them all a round of applause. concludes our recognition for this evening.
And now we will move on to our statements from the audience. And I understand there's supposed to be a chair brought on our speaker's seat. And our first speaker is going to be Laura Marks, and the topic is solar roofs.
Thanks for accommodating me. No problem. I'm here to speak about the importance of getting a solar roof on things. It was one of the things that the voters voted for when we, when the bond issue came up. I think there should be an imperative that we follow through on that. And I think it's imperative that the community posted on progress. We've got a moral imperative to reduce our carbon footprint. We're facing, we're looking at disastrous effects of climate change, and we need to be doing our part on reducing that. The county has a program that I'm, Mike Foley is here designing those that will hopefully he'll be able to give you more details as well. Mike Stevens, I'm just here to let you know that there's an imperative that we do something about it. Shaker Heights, the city of Shaker Heights is, is going, is working with this program. The Shaker Heights School District is working with this program. City of Cleveland Heights plans to put solar roofs on the recreation center and the service center through this, through the county's program. And the program is here for those, our school district to get into. And the time to do it is now. The students who are entering kindergarten at this point in time, by the time they graduate, a million species will have gone extinct because of human impact on the environment, loss of habitat, warming, water level rise, pollution, pollution in the air. And we need to do our part. This isn't business as usual time. We need to be focused on what we can do to reduce our, the human impact on our environment. I'm sitting down tonight because I have a disability because of the toxicity in general and that the air in this room in particular is quite bad. And the only thing that I can do is to come and advocate for healthier air quality. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up Alan Wilkinson, and the topic is solar roofs.
So Alan Wilkinson, 1286 Yellowstone, Cleveland Heights. This all got catalyzed with Laura meeting somebody in Shaker Heights and finding out that the county had this program, that they've done some advanced procurements. And, and you can actually work under their procurement for a power purchase agreement, which actually is a almost no cost, but maybe the phrase is low cost investment. They pick up all the capital costs and they give us a discounted rate on the utilities, electric utilities. The key is the timing. There's a, the tax picture is, you've got 30% to the end of this year, federal tax incentive to these providers. It drops to 26% next year. It drops to 22% the year after that. It's a question of timing. Can, can you get something meaningful between now and December 31st? And second is maybe, maybe there's even a better arrangement. And there's a few other people here, Mike Stevens, and there might be some others who are prepared to talk about what other kind of packages could happen. But in the end, you, you know, you guys got my email today. And there really is, it's going to take some thought. It's going to take some investing, investigating. And it may be more labor than you guys can really fork over, you know, in, in the near term. But you really do have a lot of intellectual capital in the community that could do, could answer all the questions you have and, and do a lot of legwork and then bring back to you information that you need to make decisions. So, and I imagine George can use some help in doing this too. And I guess another key thing is for us to find out, what is it? You know, three years ago thereabouts, this process happened before. And the then board did not get at all interested. And we would like to avoid that cycle again. And so we need to know what are the concerns from your side that would say this is not a good idea? Or that's something you would worry about severely in order to make progress? Because if we can't answer that, then we're not going to go any worse. And again, I call my, your attention to my email today. That's, I do my best thinking when I'm writing.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Clouse, and the topic is permit to use school grounds July 4th.
I'd also like to say that I had solar panels installed on my roof in 2008. And there were several months when I didn't have an electric bill. That should be of interest to a school board. So I would encourage the school board to act on the solar panels. That's not part of my topic, but, for environmental, educational, and economic reasons. My name is Bob Clouse. I live at 2463 Kingston Road. I moved in there in 1992. I live on a street that, with Queenston, Princeton, and Canterbury, we surround Canterbury Elementary School. There's been a tradition in our neighborhood to host an Independence Day Parade for, on the, on the 4th. We start at the south end of the street with about 125 people behind a police car and a pickup band. And by the time we round the corner at East Scarborough, there's well over 250. And by the time we get to Princeton, there's 300 people marching down the middle of the street. You can join us if you like. When the kids see the playground at Princeton, Canterbury, they break for the, into a run for the free ice cream and lemonade. We have Swifty the Clown is there. He twists anything you want into, out of balloons. And we sing the Star Spangled Banner. There is evidence that this parade has been in, in place since the late 1940s. It's a single annual event that everybody in our neighborhood looks to. In 2000, the year 2000, I volunteered to coordinate the parade, arranging with the police and fire, getting the food, the entertainment set up, clean up. And for some reason or other, I still have the job. Last year, when I applied to the Board of Education to use the Canterbury Playground, we don't plug in for electricity. We just stand on the asphalt. I was told that there is now a requirement that we have a $1 million liability insurance policy. In my work of 30 years with nonprofits and my current work as a pastor of a church, I contacted several insurance companies. And the cost for a one-time use, for a one-hour stay on the Canterbury School Playground would be in excess of $500, which is more than what we pay for the ice cream, the balloons, and, and everything else. So the cost would more than double for us. Last year, I believe it was a Paul Lombardo, Mr. Paul Lombardo that arranged for a, a one-time waiver. So we didn't have to get it last year. And had I been working through the winter, I probably would have had a solution for it. But instead, I just passed out a resolution with the flyer this year. We passed them out last Friday and Saturday. And the resolution reads as such, whereas the Independence Day Parade has been held annually in Canterbury, Princeton, Kingston neighborhood for as long as any current resident can recall, some claiming to have seen photos of the event from the late 40s. And whereas more than half of the parade participants are children, many of whom have attended or will attend Canterbury School. And whereas the neighborhoods are immensely grateful for the green space adjacent to Canterbury School Building and can be found utilizing the space frequently when the weather is amenable all summer long. And whereas the school grounds are supported and maintained by a substantial tax dollar provided by the neighbors who anticipate the parade year after year. And whereas the neighbors of the Royal Heights believe Canterbury School should provide not only a high-quality education for youth in our area, but shall be an anchor for building neighborhood solidarity, a polling place for the exercise of our patriotic responsibility, and a site for celebrating shared values and diversity in our midst. And whereas the children are accompanied by parents, grandparents, and other siblings while on the school grounds of Canterbury School. And whereas police and fire personnel and equipment are routinely invited and on hand from the very start of our parade when we step off at the south end of Kingston Road until the event disperses after one hour of socializing on Canterbury grounds, reducing, reducing risk and enhancing the safety of all participants. And whereas a waiver of the obligation to provide proof of insurance for $1 million was granted in 2018, we, the residents of Royal Heights, respectfully request a permanent waiver from the burden of having to secure a certificate for $1 million liability and damage insurance for our annual Independence Day Parade. That was signed. And I got, as of today, at 6 o'clock, 62 returns from the nearly 400 residents in the Royal Heights. All right?
Thank you. We will look into this. And I see you have your information on here where we can get back with you in the future.
In the near future.
Hopefully before 4th of July, right?
I do.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Next is John Scott, solar roof.
Madam Trefferson, yield to Mr. Mike Foley.
Okay, thank you. And next is Krista Hawthorne, School Community Communications Event.
Is Mike Foley going to speak?
Yes, he's here.
He's here, but he's later on the list.
Right.
Yep, he signed up. Sorry.
Hello, everyone. I'm Krista Hawthorne, Executive Director of Reaching Heights. And first, I wanted to express Reaching Heights thanks to the Board of Education for an incredible year. I hope you keep track of all the events that you go to. And, well, because I think this was an extraordinarily busy year for you. And I'm hoping that next year is not quite so busy. That this year could be the top of the list of the number of events that you go to together. So, but as I say that, thank you for all that you did this year. We're ready to plan for next year. So I'm here to talk about the next Reaching Heights School Community Communications Event. And the theme of this event is access to information. And two common requests from our past School Community Communications Events have been more time to interact with Board of Education members and easier access to information about our schools. So we wanted to structure an event that responds to both of those requests. So this event we are planning would follow the World Cafe Discussion Model that some of us have experienced before, which is a way to bring people into small groups. Imagine sitting around a table where there are table hosts. And then the attendees sit and introduce themselves and talk about a specific topic for a specific period of time. And then everybody gets up, except the table hosts, who stay at their table. And the attendees can move to another table to sit down and have a discussion about another topic for a period of time. So the idea is not that the attendees move together as a group, but in fact that they move randomly to different tables. And the idea being that they would get to know each other as well as discussing the topic of the table. So I'm here to invite all five members of the Board of Education and the district communications staff to assist the Reaching Heights staff as table hosts at this event. And I think it was important to come and, and ask, make this request publicly because our five board members don't usually come together except for meetings like this. So as with past School Community Communications Event, this is not an event that would be open to the general public because especially with this structure of the World Cafe, it does limit the number of participants possible in, in a room. So as in the past, we would invite up to three members of each organization. So it would be for community organizations like PTAs, like nonprofits, neighborhood groups. But the idea being that we'll reach more people if we have three representatives who come to the event and then go back to their groups and share what they've learned. We're hoping to have somewhere between 50 and 75 participants. So we really need the five of you plus two or three communications staff people plus the four Reaching Heights staff people to be those table hosts. And the topics that would be discussed would be whatever we determine would be relevant and different topics per table. And, and then at each table there would be a laptop so that when topics come up that require some kind of research, that maybe would be information we could find on our website, the CHUH website, we could actually show the participants how to manage and access information through the website. Because the website is great, but it's dense. And you have to practice a little bit to get to the pieces of information you might need. I would love it if everybody coming to this event would walk away with an understanding of how to access board docs, how to really understand the differences in the different calendars that are available on our website. And also, you know, the athletic component, the CTE component that are kind of satellites of our website. So we are, have identified Thursday, October 3rd, from 6:30 to 8:30. We don't have a location determined yet. And I hope that I will be able to check with you, Jody, about board vet attendance and Caitlin about communications staff. And, and then be able to send out some invitations. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. I will talk with the board. Obviously, we have one member missing tonight who is actually in Columbus giving testimony on a House bill. So that's why we're not all five here, but we will get back with you. Thank you. Next up, Mike Stevens, solar roof.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Most of you don't know me here, but I am a lifelong Cleveland Heights resident since I've been three years old. 1969 graduate of Heights High and working on the committee to put together our 50th reunion next month. And I have invited our new superintendent as my guest to come to our festivities, the class of 1969. I am, since 1973, been involved in solar and renewable energy. And I am the designer of the motor cars Honda solar canopies. And I did the engineering on the canopies and also the design of the solar circuitry up in the canopy. I've been involved since college and since 2001 with most, many, or many of the major, first off, solar innovations in the country as a worker, as a engineer, as a site superintendent, a construction manager. And now I do operations and maintenance work for one of the largest solar developers in the country. I approached the board back in 2013, 14? Alan, 14? When the school, when the high school had not yet been rebuilt. But it was an entirely different board. And when I met with Dr. Dixon then, I emphasized that it was, I believed it was an important part of the future of the district to incorporate some type of solar energy project into the district. It didn't happen then, but that's okay. The situation has changed now. I've just recently been involved, or been made aware that the county has an active program going on, including PPAs. And I, just this morning, spoke with Scott Amadury, who is one of the principals of Enerlogics, who built, or is proposing the PPA for the Shaker School District. And they just recently completed a four-megawatt project on a closed landfill in Brooklyn that the city of Cleveland is buying power from. I may actually be doing service work on some of the equipment on that site in the future. It is, to me, vitally important for the future of the district that some type of solar energy project be engaged in. And at the high school would be the perfect place. It was designed and rebuilt with solar in mind on the roofs. And approximately at least a half a million watts of solar energy could go on that roof. And it could be easily accessible to all of the students, faculty, staff, and entire community via the internet, everything that comes off of that system. And it could be designed such that many different types of the current accepted solar energy technologies could be incorporated into this system for compare and contrast. And even kindergarteners could benefit from the information that comes from a system like this. I spoke this morning with Scott Amadury, who is, as I mentioned, one of the principals of Enerlogics, outlined specifically this project and whether or not it could be viable before the tax credits run out or are reduced from 30% to 26% next year. The facts, the basic facts he gave me are that any PPA that would need to be entered into would have to be executed by the end of October. And by December 31st, at least 5% of the total project cost would have to be expended in order to gain what's known as IRS safe harbor for the investors who would build the site. So the entire project would not need to be built this year, but it would need to be engaged in. And at least 5% of the cost, overall cost, would have to be expended by December 31st. Scott assured me, and I know as a solar professional of many years, that a project like doing even a single site like the, the high school takes about a year to do, to do it right. Haste makes waste. And the solar environment and the incentives environment in Ohio are difficult. The players that have come in and are now working with Mike Foley and Cuyahoga County are making brave steps. They're taking a pretty good risk. But what they offer through a PPA is a no upfront cost to the particular school district, city, community, municipal, whatever it is. And in speaking with Scott, both he and his father are graduates of Case Western Reserve University. They both hold advanced degrees. They've both been solar professionals for many years. His father for almost as long as I have, at least 40 years. I think it would be a tremendous asset for the district, for the future of the district, and merits the close scrutiny of the board and the entire district. I would volunteer my time.
Mr. Stevens, is there a way we can get in touch with you?
Of course.
You've gone beyond your five-minute amount of time. But can you leave us your information?
Yes, of course. I would be happy to give my information out. And I would volunteer my time. Five years ago, I offered the school board $20,000 of my time. And they couldn't, couldn't handle that at the time. But I am offering my time and professional skills to make this right for the school district. This is my home. Unfortunately, I don't live in Cleveland Heights anymore, but this is home. And I want to do the right thing for this community.
Thank you. So will you leave us your information? We appreciate it.
Be happy to.
Thank you so much.
Mike Foley is next.
Yep, Mike is. He is next on the list. And he's going to talk about solar roofs as well.
Thanks. Thanks, I'm Mike Foley.
I'm the Director of Sustainability for Kiahoga County. And actually, Mike did a pretty good job of kind of walking through a program we're running now. The county's making a big commitment to recognize that climate change is occurring, that we're going to have to react to the problems that climate change has occurred, brings to us, but also think about how do we minimize our impact in terms of greenhouse gases going up in the atmosphere. So the county has three buildings that we're going to be doing solar on this year. We've got our animal shelter building in Independence, our morgue in University Circle, and a new public works facility in Newburgh Heights that we're going to be doing solar panels on. And the way we've written our, we did a RFP, and the way we wrote the RFP was that any local government in the county could take advantage of our, the contract that we procured through this RFP. So we hired, we went through the RFP, we hired a group called Enerlogics. As Mike said, they, we know that they did the Brooklyn Solar Project last year, which is 35,520 solar panels on a closed and capped landfill in the city of Brooklyn. And that power is running through Cleveland Public Power lines into county buildings, basically. So it's covering about 8% to 10% of our electricity needs for a set of buildings. But this year, we're looking at some other set of buildings and we kind of, as we've been thinking about this, one of the things we wanted to do is put solar in our buildings, but try to do it in a way where we didn't have to put up upfront money, basically. And where we didn't have to own the panels, and we didn't have to insure the panels. So Mike talked about, he used the word, the term PPA. It's called a power purchase agreement. And basically, what we're doing is we're buying the electrons that are generated from the solar panels that someone else owns and puts on our rooftop. So we don't own them, we don't have to insure them, we don't have to maintain them, and Enerlogics owns these things. What they get with us is a guaranteed customer for the electrons that are created from the solar panels. What we get from them is a lower cost of electricity. So our estimate for these three buildings is that over a 20-year power purchase agreement, we're going to save about $900,000 in electricity costs. And first couple of years, it'll be right about even, right around parity, but we'll be starting off at 9.89 cents a kilowatt hour. And with about a 1.7%, a 5% inflator over the 20 years, the normal grid prices inflate by about 2.5% a year over the last 30 years. That's been the inflation factor in the state of Ohio. Nationally, it's higher than that, to be honest with you. It's over, it's around 3%. So we think that by year three, we're going to be to the positive in terms of what we're paying, as compared to what we're paying off the grid for electricity, and it's coming from a clean energy source, it's coming from a local developer. The work that is being done is going to be done by local installers. So it's, we think it's a kind of a win-win-win ecologically, environmentally, economically. And it's a thing that, you know, local governments can piggyback off of, basically, and take advantage of. So we've got a lot of local governments that are thinking about this now. So we're meeting Lakewood next week in front of one of their council committees. As Mike said, Clayton Heights is thinking about it. The solid waste district is going to, has a good roof. Metro Health is looking at a facility they have in Middle Rock Heights. The Port Authority's got some facilities they're looking at. So it's not, it's something that we think is a good model where people don't have to come up with upfront money. You're getting lower cost electricity, and it's coming from a clean source, and it's environmentally conscious. So more than happy to take questions on that. But it's, like I said, Enerlogics, Scott Amadury is kind of the lead there, and he's more than willing to, you know, if you give him a building, so look at it and do start doing the analysis. And they can do this with Google Maps, basically, just look at the roof and say, we think we can do, you know, half a, half a megawatts worth of power there, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 panels. And also run through the economics for you. So we'd encourage it.
Thank you. Will you also leave your contact information so we can get in touch with you?
Yeah, should I leave it to?
Give it to me?
You've got my last card, and I broke it from the back.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time. So that's all of the people we had sign up to speak tonight. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
Joey, is it possible to adjust our agenda so we can talk about a new business item real quick? So I was going to bring up new business, I was going to bring up the solar issue, the solar issue for new business.
Do you want to move forward in the agenda?
Yeah, we have a lot of people here in the room, and I guess in the interest of getting them home, do you mind if we, if we talk about that for a little quickly?
I'm okay with it. You just have to make a motion to move that, to move that item up to the agenda now. So do you make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to move the new business item up, up in the agenda.
Can we have a second? Okay. So, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, we have moved that item up to the agenda, so we can talk about it now.
Excellent. Thank you.
We want to do things in front of the work.
Yeah. So, I mean, we've been flooded with a lot of information about this solar opportunity that we have. And we know that there's a lot of questions that we may have. We know that there's some time that, well, there's a, there's a deadline between, I guess, analyzing this stuff and actually doing it. And we learned, you know, with one piece of information tonight, that timeframe might, we might have to make a decision by October. Is this something that we can ask the bond accountability group to do, or have Georgia's group do a quick pass on it, just to see if it's worthwhile to look at? And then figure out a path that we can sort of dig into? So I guess I'm asking the superintendent, I'm asking the board through the superintendent, can we see what the steps would take internally so we can begin to analyze this, or fish and cut bait quickly? I know that there's risk involved. You know, things like if you put panels on an older roof, what does that mean?
Right, right.
If the roof breaks, who pays to remove the panels, fix the roof, and put things back? Because it seems like we're always dealing with broken roofs. But we do have a high school that has a nice new roof, so that may change the dynamics.
Well, the high school roof was supposed to be built to be solar ready, so that the conduit's already there. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
That was part of the project from the beginning, was that whether or not we added the panels, we were going to have it ready for panels.
Well, I know I voted on, I think this is, Beverly and I would have voted on this, change orders to increase the number of conduits that were initially planned. And I don't, you know, there was apparently some expert at Gilbane, or through Gilbane, that made that recommendation for us, just so we could be solar-ready. So we've already put public dollars into the building to accommodate solar. You know, I, you know, we have, we're going to have a ton of questions, and our staff's going to have a ton of questions. And we have, you know, George, you would likely have to assume we'll go through George, but I mean, George is trying to move everything from Wiley to our middle schools, which is a huge priority right now. So I don't know what, what we can do to digest this, but I mean, can we spend some, a little bit of time to see what it'd be like if we were to walk down the decision-making process?
Well, I love the idea of getting the Bond Accountability Commission involved, because I think that there might be some expertise there. Also, our former sustainability working groups, if there's, which I think several of those folks were here speaking tonight, so I think that would be another good group. I mean, I have a couple of questions that I immediately thought of as I was jotting some notes. You know, first of all, we need to ensure that the building can structurally handle it. It sounds like we have more information on that than I'm immediately aware of. You know, how much would this cost? How long to take, how long would it take to get some kind of return on the investment? Who do we need to engage to get started on something like this? So I mean, I have a whole series of questions I was jotting down immediately, but I definitely think it's something that we should at least consider and look into, and not just dismiss on hand. I think that, you know, we have maybe a good opportunity to do it.
Yes, okay.
So my understanding about a feasibility study is that this company needs our electric bills for past 12 months. And that's all they need in order to start looking at it. So from our perspective, I'm assuming that's not too hard to provide. But I also know that we have some trouble with one of the electric meters at the high school, so the readings may not be accurate. So I'm wondering about that, and that's something that came in an email, one of the many emails we've been reading this month. So we need to find out whether that's an issue, whether we've got readings that are accurate or not. So the first step, I think, doesn't require very much, and then the second step would be where we have to make some decisions.
So Dr. Williams, is there anything that, you know, are you willing to?
Correct. I'll look into the matter, and I'll connect up with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I respond to one question? I'm sorry.
You have to come to the mic.
I apologize.
Sorry, they're taping this, and so if you're not at the mic, nobody watching it can hear it.
I just want to reiterate, there's, there would be no cost to the, to the school district, so you're not buying anything. Someone else, Enerlogics would be buying the panels, owning them and installing them. What you're doing is just buying the electricity, and it should be at a lower cost than what you're paying for off the grid, just so you know. So there's no upfront dollars you would have to spend. One of the things that Mike mentioned is that there's this tax credit, federal tax credit that steps down. Cleveland Heights, you know, University Heights, you guys don't pay taxes, but, but the developer does, right? So that helps with reducing the cost for the total development of the project, which makes the, so because they're getting a 30%, federal tax credit, it just makes the price of electricity, if you would pay, lower. So I just wanted to reiterate that, and I apologize for that.
No, thank you. We appreciate that.
I mean, one of the things we struggle with though is risk. And, you know, if we were a business, or if it was our own house, we're willing to take more risk, but when, you know, public building's at stake, and, and our core mission is to, you know, advance, you know, the education for our kids, we have to look at priorities and time. So I'm not trying to throw cold water on this, but I mean, it's that risk portfolio that maybe is why this got stopped before. It's really helpful, and I commend the county for putting together a package, because it, it offloads a little bit of the risk from us when we see other organizations doing it and taking the same kind of risk. So that's really fortunate, and I'm really thankful that, you know, I mean, this is a whole different deal now, I think. It's something that, you know, we can, we can look at, so, so thanks.
I think it's, you want to look at your roof, right? And you'll have the staff who can look at your roof, and Enerlogics can help you think through, you know, what are the structural impacts that solar panels are having on your roof? And those are things that, you know, they'll walk through you with. And if it doesn't make sense at the end of the day, it doesn't make sense, but I think it probably does.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
And since it came up during the discussion here, I would like to introduce our incoming superintendent, Elizabeth Kirby, who's in the audience. So I'm sure she'll be part of this discussion as well, since she'll be starting here very soon. All right. So now we will move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is going to cover the items of meeting minutes, personnel, educational, education services, business services, and finance. Do I have a motion to consider or to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Right second. Great. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to congratulate the whole district on hiring a new superintendent, and I want to congratulate Caitlin Kavanaugh on her new position.
I just wanted to introduce Caitlin as our new supervisor of communication. So Molly and I were on the same page. And Caitlin begins on Monday.
You stand up, so everybody knows who you are. Congratulations, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations in a minute when we vote, okay?
Right.
All right, is there, is there any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
And I just want to make one quick comment. I'm excited to see the field trips, that, you know, international field trips for our students. And I was also very pleased and pleasant and surprised, and frankly, just amazed at the number of donations that we continue to receive from our local community. So thank you to everyone who donates to our school district. And now moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Williams.
Dr. LaFro.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've, we've talked a lot this year about policies, and this is our third and final group, we call it Group C, of policies, although we know action needed by the board tonight. But we are reading 19 policies that we, we are revising. You were given those ahead of time. Again, this is our first of three readings that we will start. And be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I think I've had time to go through three of them so far, so I'm going to wait until the next time.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that the, the policy on grading was the recommendation that the grading task force had brought to us at the last work session on May 21st.
That's correct.
So that is, that is the one that the grading task force has recommended to us?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the policies?
Yeah, I, I've got, I've got, I guess, five little items here. So we talked about electronic equipment, and I don't know what page it's on, but it's...
Here's a seven...
Revised policy volume 36, number one. And it looked like, I'm not sure how it, how it reads and fits in. So I'm concerned that we tell our kids you can't have a cellphone in school, but they all have cellphones, and they use them. So is this, I just like some reaction from staff. And again, these are questions on, you know, how do we deal with the dilemma where our parents feel safer when their kids have a cellphone? And then we have a listing of prohibited equipment, and that equipment is prohibited. So I'm just trying to get a sense of how, you know, how that plays out. And, I mean, realistically, in the classroom, I mean, is there a reason why we're saying that they're prohibited, but we sort of look the other way and know that they're there? Or do we require that they're in the lockers? So I, I just would like to have some clarification and maybe learn maybe how other school districts deal with that.
When we did go through this, and we did take it to our technology coordinator group that we meet on a monthly basis, there are quite a few different technology policies, but the teacher and the principal does have the option to allow students to use those devices for educational value. So throughout the, I believe there's five different policies here. We can dissect that, and I can send you information on the, on that. But we do know that people have cellphones, it's just properly using them throughout the day.
Well, and we, we've got pieces in the policy that deal with how you do properly use a cellphone.
Correct.
So it's sort of ironic that we prohibit a cellphone. So that's where I'm just trying to get a better sense of sort of how it, how it flits.
I think, what I remember when I was reading the policy, and I'm not sure if this is the one that you're referring to, but it talks about specifically about recording, using your cellphone for recording.
That's one of the uses.
Yeah, that was one of the uses that was prohibited.
And device, and there's a listing of, there's a listing of prohibited devices.
Right, but then I thought that there was also a clause in there that says something about that they're, when they're being used for instruction, they're allowed.
Well, I think that's...
At the direction of a teacher.
Yeah, well, that's where I think I'm looking for the clarification, because it seems like we contradict ourselves, and we sort of keep it in the same category as portable TVs and that, so, and pagers. So I know we're trying to update the policy, I just want to make sure that we've really thought through this.
Yes.
I, I'm just looking for some clarity, and obviously, not now, because this is our opportunity to sort of give, give you feedback and questions. I'm a little concerned about the grading policy and how it's going to be implemented. And I believe the grading task force did a phenomenal job presenting in our last work session. But there was three other presentations we had, and I'm not sure we really had enough time to really understand how it's going to be implemented, the new grading policy. You know, some of the concerns were the grades may all go down for all our kids with this new policy. I think theoretically, how it's all laid out, the, the goal of the grading policy is right on. I'm just concerned about how it's going to be implemented. So I'd like some clarity on that. I mean, it may make sense to pass the policy, and then as the grading task force moves on. And Felicia, I don't, I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I mean, I, I mean, we've got three readings of this, so I'm...
Along with the policy, we have also written administrative guidelines. So the administrative guidelines will be shared with the board as well, for you to take a look at. And that actually outlines what each one of the principals that we presented, the four principals, talks about how that steps out the implementation and what that looks like.
Okay. Good. There's a competitive bidding section. And I would just sort of like to get some clarity of what actually has changed between what we have and what's being proposed. Everything we have is sort of in green highlight, but I don't see strike through, so is this an add?
Yeah, all the green highlights are added language. And what policy number are you looking at?
I'm just going from the printout that you gave us. 62, 6320.
6320? That wasn't... So if you look at 6320, let me get there. See, in 6320, you'll see, let's see where the Xs are, that's that language that is added. But anything green highlighted is what Neola has implemented as additional language they're recommending boards adopt in this policy.
Okay.
Okay, so you will see there is quite a bit of added language on that third page, third and fourth page, that's all additional language that Neola is recommending that's added.
So can you come back in our next meeting for the second reading and just sort of explain how that differs from how we are implementing our current purchasing policy and how we do competitive bidding?
It actually doesn't. It supports what we were doing. That's sort of language, and I'll go through... I saw the language, and I'll go through it again and provide you what you're asking for, but the language was procedures that we already implemented in our public bidding, so it was just supporting what we already did. And again, like Paul said, it was Neola recommendation, but I can provide you with what changed.
If you could, I mean, so for example, the 50,000 threshold is still the 50,000?
That changed. That was 25,000, that went to 50,000. That was last year.
Right. If you could.
Right, and cost, I mean, just for a minimal cost to get work done, it makes a lot more expedient just to get things like that to accomplish. But I'll provide you with that.
If you could, that'd be great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any other discussion on the policies? Then we'll see you, Dr. Lombardo, when we have to have the second reading of these policies, and I'm sure we'll see you before then.
All right.
On this topic, we'll see you the next week.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on to our treasures report, Scott?
So we have a five-year forecast for your approval tonight. The only change in the forecast you'll note is that we've taken the $750,000 that we'd previously had pulled out and identified separately in previous forecasts in terms of savings, and actually, for 2020, and actually embedded that up in the forecast in the appropriate items, which would have been in salaries and materials. So it's slightly changed the bottom line based on the compounding of those individual items, but not materially, so that's really the only change you'll see. And then you also note that we have included again, a link to the five-year forecast history from September of this year all the way through this current forecast, so people can go through and look and see the history from the first year.
Thank you. I appreciate you adding that. I know that was something that we asked for, but it helps us be able to compare and not have to keep going back to previous meetings and finding, digging it out.
It makes it so much easier.
Thank you for recommending that. That was a good idea, and actually, I think we have the process down now, so we're good.
Do the salaries and wages for the upcoming year, are we at stasis for that, you know, how many bodies in each spot we've got?
Primarily, although it's still, those numbers are still pending the outcome of contract negotiations.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that piece is not in the forecast yet, other than what was previously assumed, but in terms of the staffing, it's pretty much what you see here is what we have.
Okay.
Yeah. And as we move forward through the budgeting process over the summer, we will start the fiscal year out for next school year with a temporary appropriation, that's generally 25% of the previous years, and then come by the first October where the board is statutorily obligated to approve a final budget or final appropriation. So at that point, we will certainly have, you know, a firm grasp on the number of staff people we have. That's when we'll be bringing the appropriations for approval.
Okay, thank you.
And when will we have an idea of the impact of vouchers?
So I do have, I had put in a request to Pat Christoperson, our registrar, to try to get some preliminary numbers based on the applications she's seen thus far, and then there's another open enrollment period, and I'm looking at Austin, I think, that's July?
That is correct.
Correct. So, so once we see those applications come in, then we'll know by the end of July, but at least who's applied.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Rainey?
Yes. Yes.
All right, moving on to the board president's report, and I do have a couple of things that I wanna cover tonight, probably not in the best order, but I will go ahead and cover them. First of all, I wanna let everybody know that I will be attending the second meeting of the school board president's group, the northeastern Ohio kind of, we don't really have an official name yet, but it's all of us board presidents who wanna get together. That is gonna be this Thursday evening in Chagrin Falls, and the topic that we're going to be covering is onboarding and orientation of superintendents and treasures. So there seem to be several of, you know, common school districts that have that, that common issue, so that's what we're gonna talk about. I also wanted to make an announcement that the League of Women Voters has adopted an official position that rejects high-stakes testing, and this information came from Suzie Kazer, who is a member of the League of Women Voters.
And this is statewide, right?
Yes, statewide, yes. So this was at their annual state convention, that the delegates voted unanimously to adopt a position that states that high-stakes testing is a misuse of standardized tests. So it's nice that they are supporting a lot of what we feel, and that is also the subject that our fellow board member, Dan Heinz, is giving testimony on right now, is why he's not here tonight. He is giving testimony against high-stakes tests. I also wanted to just make two quick announcements, that many of our students are at the Explorer Future Camp this week, and that is a camp for learning about career technical education programs, and I think that's pretty exciting. I wanna thank the district and thank Dr. Williams and all the staff members who have made that camp possible. I think it's amazing that we start introducing our children to CTE in younger and younger ages, 'cause I think that's really important for them to consider it, and so I understand that this program is for early high school students as well as middle school students. Also, shout out that the Reaching Heights Music Camp is coming up, and that will be the following week, and the concert is going to be on Saturday morning, Saturday, June 15th. I believe it starts at 10:30, and I invite the entire community, it's gonna be at the high school, if you've never been to one of these, please come. The talent of our students is amazing, I can't believe what we get out of these kids in a week, and it's just a phenomenal event. Also, I want to announce that our joint meeting, or I should say, our three-way joint meeting, it's three-way joint, I'm not sure if that's correct, but it's gonna be with the city of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and the school board, and that will take place here on June 24th at 7, 6:30 PM, so we start a little earlier for that. So that's the president's report. Any questions? Okay, moving on, are there any board committee reports?
Council of PTAs has voted in their revised bylaws at a meeting which unfortunately I was unable to attend, but I hear it happened, so that's good. And that's all I have, that's officially committee reports.
Did I call any committee reports, Carolyn? Okay. I guess one of the things that I did not mention in the president's report is, I wanna congratulate all of our staff who won awards at our staff recognition banquet on Thursday night. It was a lovely event, and the talent in the room and the talent of our staff just continues to amaze me, and so congratulations to all the award winners, and I hope that this is an event that we will continue in the future, because I think it's just wonderful that we honor our staff in that way. Is there any unfinished business?
When I attended National School Boards Association in Philadelphia a few, a number of weeks ago, several topics came up which I thought were pertinent to us, and then those same topics are being addressed in a workshop on Friday in Columbus, and Caroline has very graciously signed me up at the last minute. So I'm doing this from memory, but there's a workshop on the changing legal landscape of special education, there's one on the increasing prevalence of medical marijuana, and how does that affect, say, school nurses and things like that, policy which I think is relevant to us, and I can't remember what the other two were, but there were four out of five that sort of hit the nail on the head for me, and I thought I'd go to this. So that will be my field trip on Friday.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, and I'm sure you'll report back after the event.
In all of course details.
Great.
I'd just like to say farewell to Scott and let him know how much we appreciated him and the work that he did for the district, and we're gonna miss him.
I wasn't gonna say that, 'cause I'm still not, I can't reconcile it with the fact that he's leaving, so, but thank you, Scott, we appreciate all that you've done. I also wanna thank Caroline Jewel-Rodger, she's not here, but she also has done a lot, and I particularly appreciate the amount of work that Scott and Caroline have done for the board this year. So thank you.
I'd like to sort of recognize the fact that we had a busy week last week, but the highlight was graduation, both eighth grade and also our spectacular seniors. I mean, we've been in the news recently, but not about our senior class and how they just really hit a home run. A 12.2 million, I guess it's not an audited number, unreleased number, but you know, 12.2 million in scholarships, up from 10.4 the previous year. I mean, just spectacular class, they really made the most out of the high school, and I'm just real proud of them. And it was, I mean, you know, being at the, and after your kid's graduating, you go to some of those graduations, you wonder why, but you go and you see, man, you're thrilled at seeing this, and our eighth graders, you know, who are moving up to the high school. It's just really exciting to see, and I'm real proud of these kids.
And Jim, I believe that the number I found was that it was $97,000 of that scholarship money was locally funded from people who live within our school district boundaries. So what a generous community, and thank you. Any new business?
Yes, I have, or maybe this is correspondence and announcements, I don't know.
Okay, well, we can do it all together. Whatever it is, it'll hit the mark.
Yeah, I've been approached recently by some parents who are concerned about equity in our music programs at the middle schools, and this is not new news to us, but with the middle schools going back to their separate homes in August, there's concern that we don't have two FTEs at Monty for instrumental music the way we do at Rocks Mid. And as we talk about whether or not it's possible to have an honors component to our high school music programs, I think that what happens at the middle school will be an important consideration for making sure that we are moving everything along, because everything, as we know, starts earlier so that you can see the outcomes when the students are older. So that's, I've been approached more than once now about that topic, and so I think it's something that we should be paying attention to. That's one of the reasons I asked you about salaries, because I don't know, you know, what the implications are financially. But our orchestra teacher, our strings teacher at the high school is part-time at Monty now, and Rocks has a full-time band and a full-time strings, and it would only make sense that Monty had the same stuff.
I concur on that. I have a son who did attend Monty and is now moving on to the high school, and one of the benefits of having the two middle schools together is that while they were together at Wiley, he was able to participate in the after-school strings program that was not available up until that point, and I have heard some from, as well, so. Perhaps that's something that Dr. Williams and Liz Kirby can look into as part of the transition. Thank you. Any other new business or correspondence and announcements as we're talking here, since I'm not sure which one that fell under either? Then if there's no other business, we will see if we wanna close the meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Your turn, thank you.